I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord, and justice.
Any public comments?
We don't have public comment, but I would like to propose a couple of changes. Upon further consideration and the need for further review, I'd like to pull off the contact amendment, the executive director contract amendment, and the Gov. HR.
And we'll go to administration and finance.
Okay, the first thing we have is Waterbuck and Amon Audit Review.
Right, so really quickly, so we have a representative from Waterbuck and Amon, but just to let you guys know that, you know, we are required to have a comprehensive financial report done within six months of our start of this year, so they're here to present. Sean Hickey, are you there?
I'm Sean Hickey from Waterbuck and Amon, yep, in place of Ron Amon, so. Marty said pull over to podium, but hopefully it won't take that much time, as long as I'm on camera, because I like to tell my stepdaughter I'm a movie star. I play in all the municipal, you know, every time I'm presenting, say, look at me. Do you guys have the copy of the CAFER, very high level, just kind of go over some key things, and then also we have a management letter, which is very short, which is good, and just kind of point out what's in the management letter, kind of what it means. The first thing, then, honestly, if you guys have reviewed the financial statements, I might just go to the pages, I'm not too sure if you want to follow along, go into the pages, but again, I'm not going to go through page by page or lineup by lineup, kind of highlight some things. The first thing I'd like to point out is that within this year's CAFER, we have a presentation of last year's GFOA certificate, so that means the 2016 audit report was submitted to GFOA, went through the checks that they do, and you were awarded the GFOA certificate. 2017 will be submitted this year, and I assume that you'll probably get the certificate as well. As a board, in the financial section, what I'd like to point out, what you want to hear is our independent auditor's report, which is really the only thing that we attach to your CAFER, and the main thing from our independent auditor's report is that it's an unmodified opinion, meaning that it's a clean opinion, that's the highest, the best level of opinion, all the financial information that we audited.
But that's your opinion.
All the financial information that's presented in the financial statements, you know, we've tested and it's materially current, so. I'd just like to point out the MDNA, which is in the front of the CAFER, it's a great place for a board to, you know, read, you know, the financial, you know, financial results of the district, because it compares current year to prior year, and it's more lame in terms, it kind of gives you an idea of, you know, where over there it ended. And just to kind of point out one key thing, I'd like to point out at the fund level, which is probably something that you guys are more familiar with, when you see the monthly financial statements and how you budget, what I'd like to point out in the fund level, the statement of activities, which is your revenues over your expenditures, well, this year in total for all your funds, you had a decrease of $500,000. The main reason it was a decrease is you had about $650,000 in capital projects that in the back schedules, you could see that you budgeted for, so I assume that's no surprise that you had a decrease, but also we look at your total fund balance of about $6.6 million, and that's really the reserve for the district, you know, going forward, so we kind of look at the health of the district by those two numbers. Following the fund level financial statements on the notes, kind of just supports all of the financial numbers that are presented in the basic financial statements, has some detailed information about long-term capital assets, again, I'm not going to go through that. One other thing in the back that I just want to point out, because it becomes such a hot topic over the last few years, and it's talking about your pension. In the back, you're required now to present detailed information about IMRF and the status of, funding status of your pension. Oh, that's on page 42. And on page 42, the second column, the 2016 column, at the bottom, what I always like to point out is there's a percentage, and that percentage is how much is your pension funded, and it's at 80%. So we look at that number, and certainly if you were to compare that to a lot of other government agencies in the state of Illinois, that's a pretty good number, you know, especially the large pension funds that are some 40, 50%, some less than that. Behind that information is just budget to actual schedules, again, I'm not going to go through any of that, but I'm sure you guys, month to month, go through the activity and monitor that. Before I get into the management letter, any, do you have any comments about the CAFER? Good news is the management letter is real short. First thing I'd like to point out, which is on the third page, it's a current year recommendation. We use the management letter to kind of make you aware of pending accounting standards that are coming up, and one of them that's coming out has to do with other post-employment benefits, it's similar to the pension, where they're going to run government entities to record, measure and record the long-term liability for providing other post-employment benefits to their employees who retire. That'll come down for the, for the district in a couple of years, and mostly what it's going to be is a footnote disclosure, because even if you do have benefits for retirees, most government entities haven't set anything aside, so it'll be kind of interesting, because like a pension, a lot of those have set up pension trust funds, a lot of places haven't set up this post-employment. For the district, depending on the circumstances, it might not even be material, it might just end up being footnote disclosure. The second item, which is good news, it's we're removing, in years past, we had, we always like to point out if there was a deficit fund balance or you were over budget, so we do test the compliance with your own fund balance policy, and this year we tested it and you were in full compliance, and so this will be removed from the management letter. That's all I have. If you have any questions, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, for coming in.
So remove that, so the regular board meeting.
By state.
Yeah.
One question.
Sure.
Okay, next we have the statement of receipts and dispersments.
Right, so per Illinois statute, again, we prepare a report on the receipts and dispersments for the fiscal year that ended on April 30th, 2017, we have six months to do it, so Marty has prepared that list, that report, and it is part of resolution R. 09, sorry, 09, uh, 17. So again, just something that we're required to do, as you can tell, you know, everything that we paid out, you know, $125,000, and $45,000, $49,000, and so on and so forth, so you can kind of see where everything's kind of, has been made out, so. Any questions? Move that to, um.
Okay, next we have the disposal ordinance.
Um, yes, so prior to disposing or selling of any park district property, we must get approval to be able to do that, so we're constantly looking, cleaning house, so there are several things on here that we would like to get rid of, wherever we can, we'll try and sell it, or scrap it, anything of that nature, rather than just trying to just put it in a dumpster, kind of thing. So we have a lot of cup ears, a lot of computer equipment, backups, some desk drawers, just hard stuff that we're just not using, it's gathering dust and picking up space, and I would prefer to try to get rid of it.
So what's the plan for that?
So once it's, once it's been approved, then we will set things on, we've done Craigslist, we've done eBay, we've also, yeah, sorry, thank you. Recyclers, yeah, yeah, so, and, you know, if we can, you know, sometimes if it's a big piece, we put stuff out for employees to place bids on, that sort of thing, so anything to be fair about it, so.
Okay, all right.
So if anybody wants to co-sign, co-put.
Keith wants to be situational, delegate, I think, I'll take out the card.
So move that to.
I'll truck out. And you guys, the IAPD delegates.
Yes, so it is, it's the annual business meeting of the Illinois Association of Park Districts, we're supposed to nominate delegates to attend that, that business meeting, it is Saturday, June 20th, I believe it's, I said, January, I'm sorry, I said, what did I say? I said June, yeah, that'd be a little late, January 20th, I believe it's at four or five o'clock.
It's 3:30.
3:30, oh, I'm sorry.
But it can change.
Sorry, I think I'm getting that confused with IAPD, so, so yeah, we just need you guys to think about it, nominate a delegate and an alternate, so last year, again, you were the delegate last year, Paul and Marty?
Marty did a great job.
Yeah, so we can certainly thank.
And he's the president.
Yeah. We can certainly thank nominations, or you can just volunteer yourself, so, don't need to know now, but before we actually make the final approval, so I can know by the end of the week, that would be great. Yeah, and just to verify, so it's getting that time for state and office, so, you know, booking rooms, doing registrations, just need to know who all is going, typically, yeah, you know, excuse me, let me just stop stuttering back up for a moment, so it's part of the meals, lodging, travel, we'll have to prepare that in December, so that we can make sure that you guys get permits, we can lock in the rooms, that sort of, that sort of thing, so.
When is it?
It is at the Hilton in Chicago.
Same place?
This is, yeah, same as last year, yeah, but, you know, then, a lot in the past, like staff will go down Thursday, stay overnight Thursday, attend up, there's pre-conference stuff that can be done on Thursday, afternoon, morning, and afternoon, Friday's the big start of opening session, then the luncheon, time we go to, and then some night kind of stuff, Saturday, again, educational sessions, and then opposing, closing ceremonies, so it is a great opportunity for staff to go around there and meet with other professors, and we'll just talk about what they're doing, the education sessions, to be quite honest, can be hit and miss, last year in company it was really good, but it's a great opportunity for board members to go to sessions that are directly involved in, you know, leadership and strategic planning and things of that nature, so it's really a great opportunity for you guys as well to educate yourself, some of us have certifications, I have a certification, Joe has a certification, I think there's some others, so we're required to do so many continuing education units every year, or every two years, so it's great for us to have an opportunity to, for sure. We probably won't get until probably the first part of November.
They want to know.
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to put it in your, your guys' minds about.
January 20th?
Yeah.
It's in the magazine.
I have not.
It's three days, like last year?
Yeah. So just think about it, let us, let us know, so, I mean, we can just be able to plan out, make sure you get your rooms, that, that sort of thing, but also make sure that we plan, possibly do some meals or something like that, not getting staff and board, or district board, help.
I would advise everyone who is not a member of Hilton Honors, sign up for it, because you get express check-ins instead of waiting in that four-hour line.
Yeah, exactly, that is.
On page 43, it says Steve should be playing the piano. That was a good time. You and Jack, right? My robe facing a brick.
So, yeah, so just, you know, if you've got the dates, think about it, we'll do my weekly updates, I'll continue to push, we get to a point where we're going to have to register everybody in, so, all right? Okay.
Parks and facilities. Yeah, I have a motion to action.
Right, so, um, it's actually kind of refreshing to talk about this in a closed session, so, you know, what we have been dealing with, Oriole Pool, for some time, you know, at one point in our. Pardon me? Well, yeah, so, I'm trying to, I want to paint the picture, but, you know, I don't want it to get bogged down by certain details, so, or, you know, on this, I don't want to get into the, trying to give a 30,000-foot overview of what's going on, so we had a problem at the pool, we weren't sure what that problem was, but we started doing some investigation, and we thought we were going down a certain path, and then found out that we needed to be on a different path, and we are now at a point where, hey, we have some resolution. So during our investigation, we found out there was a construction error in the way that the pool well, the bottom, the very bottom, actually where the floor of the dining well and the slant upwards sort of meets, there's a little bit too much ground material in a six-foot space from the center line of where the high dive was. So we've been working with the contractor, McHugh, who built, who was a general contractor and subbed out to Matrix Concrete this work, well, when we found out that we had this problem, we took certain steps that didn't really pan out, so we eventually got to a point where we were talking to them, they were like, hey, easy fix, we can do this, and through our conversations with them, we said, look, you know, we spent a considerable amount of money to be, to get to this point, for you to just fix it, we need some compensation, so they said, they didn't agree to an amount that we thought was reasonable, and based on advice from counsel, there's very little that we could have actually recovered in a court of law, and they said, let's just settle on a certain amount, boom, $10,000 as compensation for not building the pool to the way it was designed in architectural specifications, and to fix and warranty the work to a certain point, so we need approval tonight from all the board members to agree to this settlement, agree. Is that a.
We need approval from all the board people, or a majority?
Well, uh, it's a majority, obviously it's a majority, I would like to, I mean, we've been discussing this since I've been here, we've been discussing it prior to my, my arrival on different boards, and that, you know, has issues all of itself.
So would you just like to put this behind us and move on?
I, I think, yes, but again, we're going to the executive session, what are we going to talk about? No, yeah, it's just really nice to be able to, you know, to put this to rest, to know that, really, I think they said they're only taking out two cubic, was it a cubic yard or two cubic yard, it's very minor amount of material, once we get this settlement agreement, once we get the settlement money, Matrix will, I think they're not free until 10th of October, but once we set on a date, I'll let you know when they're going to be out there, we'll take before and after pictures, you can kind of see them do their work, so that you can see that it is rather, and you saw the construction documentation of how minor this really, really was, but because it didn't adhere to Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines, you know, it has to be fixed.
Well, before we move on, and my esteemed colleague makes a motion to approve this, I have several questions. One, do we have a file as of right now, that everything pertaining to this pool is in notes, drawings, meetings, a central file on it for future reference, if we do not, could we get one?
Yes, we, we have worked on trying to, during the course of our investigation, in trying to find the information, we have looked in different locations, executive director's office, superintendent of parks office, administrative assistants office, so.
Including minutes and everything from the last two years that we know we've been documenting, and correspondences with the attorneys and everybody?
Yes, all of that is.
And we have to put this in one place where nobody can misplace it?
Yeah, so.
Or expose it in, or lose it, or future references, or?
Yes, so executive session minutes are all, all held, recordings, we hold those. We hold, we hold those, anything that comes from the attorney to me is on the servers, so if by chance something happened to my computer, they are retrievable, not like if someone puts something on their desktop and we, we lose that information forever, so there are protocols in place to protect it.
We're going to have a central file with all this information.
With the information that we can collect.
And the second thing is, do we have a statement written yet that we're going to release to the general public, what we did, why it's been done, can answer any more questions?
Uh, no, but that can be done shortly.
I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but I do feel it's important that we do have a statement, and everybody will stand behind and an explanation on what, what happened here.
Yeah, I can do that, and I'll send it out for you.
Any other discussion?
I move to accept the recommendation of the administration of finance committee to approve the settlement agreement with J. McHugh Construction Company and Matrix Concrete Construction LLC. I'll second it.
Make a motion to pop the champagne over.
Commissioner Staben? Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Commissioner Vannell?
Hi.
Commissioner White?
Hi.
Commissioner Vannell?
Hi.
Okay, next item, recreation facility.
Yep, Commissioner Schmidt. So it looks like we're making some changes to guest services.
Yeah, well, we would like to, yes, so, in our continual, at continual efforts to find efficiencies, to trim costs that make, make sense, Laura, she, our superintendent of HR, safety, guest services, has done a review of our front desk operations, and feels that we can trim some of the time off of the nighttime hours, the weekend hours, to be more efficient, a lot of the times that we'll see that we have someone at the front desk that really is really not much to do for two hours, maybe even longer during the day, so she is suggesting we're taking off 12 hours of service hours during the week, and that would save an actual savings of about $7,500. She has done a review of other park districts and found that even shaving off the 12 hours, we're still providing more service hours to the public by at least 10 hours, and a review of registration through Retractor is saying that about 55% of all registrations come through the internet now, so it's even less of a need to actually staff this during those things, and it's not to say that a Friday before the pool's open, that we would keep these hours, we actually know that we'll see an increase or an influx of people, and we will, you know, put more people on or put longer hours in there to make sure that we're still servicing the customer.
Was there, is there any way to track, and I don't know if there is, if there isn't, there isn't, is there any way to track, like, how much we get on Saturday afternoons, like from 12 to 3, or 12 to 6?
Yeah. There are reports, we've actually been tracking it for about four or five months on the weekends, and Sunday, there's maybe one at the most, and on Friday afternoon, after 3 o'clock, we haven't had anyone come in in months, so we actually tried doing the Friday hours shorter, already over the last three weeks, and we haven't had one complaint or response, or, so, yeah, there's definitely a way to track that.
I'm not even concerned about Saturday afternoons, but again, if there's nobody doing anything, I agree.
There's, there's staff in the building, the fitness attendant is down in the fitness center, but that's their primary focus, there is a custodian in the building, in those areas that we don't want people, we can lock things down, if there is a rental in here, there's generally a rental attendant, so they're supervising rooms, things like that, so there shouldn't be, in a lot of ways, that's just redundant, having so many people here, so it's kind of uneasy.
Sign the trigger from the door, tell everybody that we're doing.
Um, yes.
Change the website.
Yes. But, you know, we're not really seeing any people during this timeframe anyway, but I understand what you're saying, and we've learned our lesson on informing our members in some previous changes, so having that information out there and knowing that, but really we're not affecting too many people, because we're just not seeing people come in during this time period.
Are we able to make changes to the website ourselves?
Yes, that was one of the big things that we wanted to make sure with Kathy, that she can make those changes, and it's really nice, you know, we, I get emails from friends that say, hey, we'll get, look at what, you know, you got to fix this, kind of send to Kathy, ooh, done, whereas before, you know, it costs us money to do it, and we have to wait, yeah, so, yeah. So move that to, Amon?
I'm just, I'm not a big fan of those changes, again, because there's nobody at the front desk, and my concern is the safety issue Friday we had a couple weeks ago, you know, I've just, I've never been a big fan of it, I'll just say that, so probably we're not going for that, it's just, it's one of those issues with me, that there's nobody at the front desk, and any really good one in the building, category or what, with certain restrictions.
Right, right, I mean, if we, we can lock off the top at.
Right, at the stairs.
Well, even, you know, they can go upstairs, but we can lock that front door.
Does the maintenance man in the building at all times?
There is a maintenance, I said, there is a maintenance person here, and during the, during the weekends, he knows that when someone's here, that's the opportunity to do everything up here, and then when someone, when that front desk, that person leaves, then he moves downstairs and does stuff downstairs.
Yes, we have some covered down.
Yeah.
And again, there's times though, there's only two people in the building, you know, pardon me if I'm wrong, but there's only a maintenance person and a fitness center in the town.
Right.
So that's, that's what's good. Big building.
True, you look at some of, some of the other. True, you look at some of, some of the other park districts, and they have bigger, bigger buildings with, you know, with two people. So, if there's, if there's anything that we can do to mitigate that, that risk or that uneasiness, we can certainly do that. I'm sure that we might, you know, again, when we make changes to like the, moving the fitness attendant, the attendant from the front to the back, you know, we've certainly heard from the residents or the members as to how, what we could do differently, so, you know, we're still working on how to best work to make sure that, you know, locker rooms are protected, and that sort of thing. So, if there's, the building is covered, for the most part, by camera, all common areas, that sort of thing. So, and that's, that's, I believe it's reviewed on the screen at the fitness attendant staff, so, you know, we might have to do some additional training with the fitness attendant, to make sure that, hey, you know, this is not just an opportunity to sit, you actually kind of have to maybe do a quick review, because during that time, when not a lot of people are coming in, maybe not a lot of people are coming into the fitness center, and there's, there's small things that they can do to help out, make sure the building is...
Can I ask you, what was, just because I wasn't here at the time, what was the purpose of making the fitness desk? And so, was it front?
Yeah, it, well, no, it was, there was a desk in the fitness center where a fitness attendant sat, and then there was someone up front, so you had two people on at the, at the same time, but, you know, they, they would check in at the front desk, and then they would go and sit, the fitness attendant would sort of just sit, you know, occasionally clean, use some equipment, use some towels, that, that sort of thing, but it's sort of like, well, why can't just one person do it? So, we reviewed, if we trimmed those hours at the front desk, we, we determined that we could save, I think it was like ten thousand dollars a year, by only having one person do there. So, we, we put in the fitness desk where it is right now, because that used to just be a hallway down to the stretching room and to a small wall that, to the fitness center, and then put in the registration software, the check-in software, that, that sort of thing, so there was more things where then we able to do, we cross-train them, or on doing registrations and things like that.
So, if somebody wanted to come in and register for something, maybe we'll go back to the fitness desk and get it done?
Anyone else?
I was just going to ask, Gordon, how come we're holding on the contract amendment, the proposal? I didn't know if I missed something?
No, no, I'm just not quite ready, got a little ahead of myself, and I think I just need to do a more thorough review of what I'm presenting to everyone, to everyone, so, you know, it may be that I just don't bring it back, or maybe I just bring it back differently?
What is it that you're presenting again?
Pardon me?
I said, what is it that you're presenting again?
So, the two things?
Contract.
Yeah.
We came to, obviously, with something, right?
Yeah, no, the memo is in there? Yeah, I, I, the memo, if you read the memo, if there's questions, I'll answer.
Okay.
Is that okay? Yeah.
Make a motion in executive session?
We do need it in executive session.
I make a motion for the board to go close section, the board of the Hilton meetings, at section one twenty slash two, point C one, one twenty slash two, C eleven, and for section one twenty-two, C twenty-one.